Okay Becky, she says we're all set to go.
Great. Thank you Terry. Welcome to our April 1st board meeting. If anyone has any April polls, they need to get out of the way. Do it quickly so that we can keep on moving. In accordance with an act to implement provisions necessary to help welfare and safety of the citizens of Maine in response to the COVID-19 public public health emergency as enacted to read section G-11 MRSA, section 403-a, public proceedings through remote access during declaration of a state of emergency to COVID-19 and for 30 days following the termination of that state of emergency. The regular board meeting will be held through Google Meet. The meeting will be live streamed and available for viewing at www.msad11.org. Members of the public wishing to make comment are invited to do so during the public comments sections of the meeting and may call 207-582-5346. Again, 207-582-5346 and follow the prompts or send an email to schoolboard, capital S, capital B, at msad11.org. Again, schoolboard, capital S, capital B, at msad11.org. In addition to the regular public comments section at the beginning of the board agenda, an additional public comments section has been added at the end of the agenda to provide the school board with the ability to answer questions sent to them during the meeting. At this time, I'll do the call to order pursuant to subsection 403-a of 1MRSA, main revised statutes annotated. We will now confirm that each member of the MSAD 11 board can hear and be heard. We will do this by calling the roll. Members present are asked to say yay. We ask all members to listen and report any audio difficulties when the roll is complete. Pat, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Becky Fless.
Yay.
Veronica Babcock.
Yay.
Nancy Forthier Brown. Nancy has indicated that she will be with us shortly. Teresa Garrett. Teresa Garrett. This shows that she is logged in. Teresa, can you hear me? I will come back to her in just a moment and here is Nancy. Welcome Nancy.
Hi there.
Jim Lothrich.
Yay.
Nicole Mador.
Yay.
Matthew Marshall.
Yay.
Patrick Saucier.
Yay.
Alyssa Tracy.
Yay.
Colin McGuff.
Yeah.
Tony Beat.
Yeah.
Quentin Martin.
Yeah.
Gwen Boldick Ignaziak.
Yay.
Matthew Lillybridge indicated that he will be absent this evening and Teresa Garrett. Teresa, can you hear me? Becky, I guess we'll have to come back. It shows that she is on. It shows that her mic is muted. So I'm not sure if she's having technical difficulties or not.
Perhaps if she is, she will call in.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Administrative staff?
Sure. Pat Hopkins, superintendent of schools. Andrea? Andrea Dish, business manager. Angela?
Angela Hardy, director of curriculum.
Chad?
Chad Kempton, high school principal.
Christina O'Neil, principal at Pittston Randolph Consolidated School.
John?
John LaPere, middle school principal.
Josh?
Josh Far, director of adult ed.
Katie?
Katie Gould, principal at Helen Thompson School.
Karen?
Karen Moody, building principal of Laura Richards School.
Nate?
Nate Stubbert, athletic director.
Sarah?
Sarah Boldick Ignaziak, assistant director of special services.
Terry?
Terry McGuire, director of technology.
Vicki?
Vicki Dugay, building principal at Riverview Community School.
Great, thank you. And Alicia Morris, director of special education will be joining us somewhere around 6:15.
Hi Pat, I figured it out. I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you Teresa.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jim, your hand is raised. You're muted Jim.
I was just trying to let you know that Teresa was having trouble with her volume. I had called her and she's on now, so I forgot to lower my hand.
There you go. Great. Takes the village. Perfect. Thank you. All right, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this point, at this time, we pause for public comments that are all items on the agenda.
Yes, I have one comment. The comment comes from one of our teachers. It is the teacher who is in charge of the steps program, Cassandra Dyer. And she writes, "Expanding the steps program to K5 would be a substantial benefit, not only for the district, but for the students who access the program. In the past, when some students have aged out of the current K2 program and moved on to their next placement, they have been rather unsuccessful. Having the expansion placed in a K5 school would make transitioning through the different grade levels more manageable as the staff in the program would still be able to help support students all the way through fifth grade. Language, routines, behavior strategies, and scheduling are all extremely important for students in this program. These students need small changes throughout their school careers in order for them to adjust, adapt, and learn new strategies to assist them. Expanding the program will accommodate the needs of these students and support them in continuing to be successful throughout their educational careers." That's the public comment that I've received.
Great. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
At this point in the agenda, it's the portion for the election of the chair and vice chair. So Pat, I will turn the meeting over to you.
Great, thank you. Just for new board members, just so you are aware, you have a board policy that states that the election of school board chair and vice chair occurs every two years in April in the odd year. So being that it's 2021, it is now time for that election. So I am going to open the floor for nominations for the position of chair. Is there a nomination?
I nominate Becky Fless for board chair.
Second, Tony.
Okay. Veronica and Tony. Are there any other nominations for the position of chair? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote for the position of chair for Becky Fless. Becky?
Yay.
I know, that's awkward, right? I hear ya. Okay Veronica Babcock. Yay. Nancy Forthier Brown.
Yay.
Teresa Garrett.
Yay.
Jim Lothrich.
Yay.
Nicole Mador.
Yay.
Matthew Marshall.
Yay.
Patrick Saucier.
Yay.
Alyssa Tracy.
Yay.
Colin McGuff.
Yay.
Tony Beat.
Yeah.
Quentin Martin.
Yeah.
Gwen Boldick Ignaziak.
Yay.
Great. It's unanimous Becky. You've been re-elected for another two-year term effective immediately. So I am going to turn this over to you for the nomination and election of vice chair. But I want you to know that your hand is raised. You may want to click that button and...
Lower my hand.
There you go.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion for the vice chair nomination.
I nominate Veronica Babcock for vice chair. Tony?
Thank you Tony. I would second that please. Are there any other nominations for vice chair at this time? Seeing none, Pat, would you please call the roll?
Becky Fless.
Yay.
Veronica Babcock.
Yay.
Nancy Forthier Brown.
Yay.
Teresa Garrett.
Yay.
Jim Lothrich.
Yay.
Nicole Mador.
Yay.
Matthew Marshall.
Yay.
Patrick Saucier.
Yeah.
Alyssa Tracy.
Yay.
Colin McGuff.
Yeah.
Tony Beat.
Yeah.
Quentin Martin.
Yeah.
Gwen Boldick Ignaziak.
Yay.
It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's always an honor to serve you and congratulations Veronica. I love working with you. It's great. Thank you. Next on the agenda is review and approval of the agenda minutes, prioritization of items and alteration of the established agenda formats, sequence as needed.
I do not have any additional modifications to the agenda beyond the revised agenda that was released yesterday afternoon, late yesterday afternoon.
Okay then. So approval of the... We'll have a motion to approve the agenda.
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by Veronica. I second it. Second by Teresa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, Pat, would you please read the agenda?
Becky Fless?
Thank you. Yay.
Veronica Babcock.
Yay.
Nancy Forthier Brown.
Yay.
Teresa Garrett.
Yay.
Jim Lothrich.
Yay.
Nicole Mador.
Yay.
Matthew Marshall.
Yay.
Patrick Saucier.
Yay.
Alyssa Tracy.
Yay.
Colin McGuff.
Yeah.
Tony Beat.
Yeah.
Quentin Martin.
Yeah.
Gwen Boldick Ignaziak.
Yay.
It's unanimous Becky.
Thank you. Approval of meetings, of previous meetings, the regular board meeting of March 4th, 2021. And it, the minutes aren't, are not available. We're not available at the time of the posting, but I guess we should approve them anyway.
No, the minutes are not done back.
So we should just let that go, let that...
We have to table that. I'm sorry. It's been so busy in this office and so they haven't been done, but they will be gotten to soon.
I've never seen this before, so I wasn't exactly sure what to do. So that's perfect. So we'll do it at the next meeting. Recognitions and celebrations?
None.
Correspondence?
Yes, correspondence. There's two and I'd like to speak to both of them briefly. First of all, we have a letter of retirement from one of our bus drivers, Barbara. Barbara Asbury has driven for MSAD 11 since 1971. She is a West Gardner. She has been a West Gardner bus driver. She has worked for MSAD 11 as a driver for 50 years. And so, unbelievable, right? That is just amazing. So I wanted to make sure that I brought that to, to your attention in case, I don't know if there's something special that you wanted to do. That is not common to have someone working for so many years for same, same entity, same business in the same position. So she will be missed. I also want to bring to your attention that I've accepted a letter of resignation from John LaPereir, the middle school principal. John has worked for us tirelessly for these last two years. He's such a professional, dedicated person. And I really do appreciate all that he has done to work with, to work for staff, students, and really try to make some, some changes at the middle school. So thank you to John for his, his leadership and I certainly wish him the best as he moves on to other opportunities. Alyssa said something, can we offer a gift card? Yes, absolutely. A gift card absolutely will happen.
Hardly sufficient enough.
Yeah, it just, I know.
We should give her a bus.
She may not want it, but you know, it's a good gesture.
Turn it into a Winnebago so she can go on the road.
Becky, Jim has his hand raised.
Oh yes, Jim.
Could we give her a recognition plaque or something like that? 50 years is a, is a heck of a commitment. Something that we could put, she could put on the wall. Just saying thank you. I mean, it's a pretty big deal. I'd like to do something like that and I don't know if we need a motion or, or whether it's just get it done.
I can just, I can just get it done Jim, if that's what you would like me to do.
That's exactly what I'd like you to do.
I think that's a great idea. So a gift, the traditional LL Bean gift card and a plaque.
Yeah.
Maybe a bus on it or something extraordinary that Pat will just take care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports. We didn't have a Capitol or a technical center meeting. Curriculum committee?
Hello everyone, this is Matt. We had a discussion at the last meeting on March 9th about changing the time. Seems that we're having a difficult time getting participation just because of work hours and such. So with the exception of this month, it's beginning next month, we're gonna start, start the meetings at 4:30 for an hour and see how that works and potentially adjust off that. So that's a little bit of a change. One thing I love about Angela, there's a number of things, but she does really, really good committee meeting notes. And I really rely on her a lot to sort of, to speak to those notes, but what I'm gonna do is, is kind of read a few of those because I think that this, this particular meeting, we covered some really important stuff. And I want to make sure that those of you that didn't get a chance to read, the minutes are in the know. So state assessment update. Angela shared the most recent information regarding the state assessments. It is still expected for all students in grades three through eight and third year in high school to participate in the math and ELA and science assessments this spring. The MDOE has lengthened the assessment window to create greater flexibility for schools and has negotiated with different vendors to field test two new state assessments. So that's some news there. The new E assessment will be used for ELA and math. This same assessment that is already being used throughout the district in the fall, winter, and spring for grades K through eight. Numeridian will be the vendor for the new state science assessment for grades five and eight and students in their third year of high school. This test has shifted vendors and is moving from a paper and pencil test to digital exam because it's, in its first year, the test will be considered a field test and the district will not be held accountable for the results. This one's really important. Winner data results from grades one through five. Angela shared a presentation where the assessment data from K5, ELA, and math were shared representing fall 2019 to fall 2020 proficiency and growth. And compared that to fall of 2020 to the winter of 2021 proficiency and growth. To allow members to put the narrative of learning loss into perspective locally. It was noted that students in grades four and five had greater retention of knowledge and skills from fall of 2019 to the fall of 2020 than the students in grades K3. This isn't surprising given the developmental stages of the students in those grades. It is possible that the remote live instruction for grades four and five in the spring contributed to greater retention. Growth from fall to winter in most grade levels is significant with two days per week and of direction, week of direct instruction. Given that the fact that the district is doubling the days of direct instruction starting in March, we hope to continue to see student learning growth across the board. There are a couple of cohorts that we are concerned with and will be layering in additional supports for teachers and students for both cohorts. And, so did you want to add anything to that? I know that was very detailed.
We're going to actually have an opportunity to look at some of the same data and a little bit more global data this evening. So I think this is a great way to bridge from that meeting into our meeting. So thank you for raising the conversation Matthew, from our, from our curriculum meeting. And I'm hoping that all of our curriculum members learn so much that they'll have great questions and opportunities to share in the discussion later when we, when we bring the data back out to this crew.
And the district continues to participate in the annual Read Across America program. Deborah Butterfield did a wonderful job sharing all of the amazing work going on across our district to support the love of literacy through the district-wide blog entry. Most notably, students at the high school have developed over 60 videos of themselves reading their favorite children's books that's shared with, been shared with elementary classrooms throughout the month of March. So all that good work. That's all I've got Becky.
Thank you Matt. Dropout prevention.
Hello. We had a meeting on the 23rd. We were a little short on participation. Myself, Joan Turdallot, and Carol Taylor and John were the only ones attending. There was a short notice on the meeting, so two of our members were already committed to other events and had, it was for the school, so they had to be there. But we discussed a new, there's possibly a change in the law coming up regarding truancy, changing the number of days that we have to be responsible for. Seven days, five days. Nobody's quite sure what it is, but we hopefully will know by the next meeting, which our next meeting is going to be on the 6th of this month. And we also discussed what could we do to help prevent any dropouts coming about because of this COVID situation? And it may not be only about COVID, but John came up with a fantastic idea, I thought, about hosting a job fair with local companies that could have the kids come in, find out what's the opportunities. Maybe they would need to go to school for two years only to become, I don't know, a mechanic. They need to go to four years to become a surveyor, those things. But businesses like that could come in, they could find out what's available, so they can get a good job. Everybody's got to finish high school to get any of these decent jobs. So that's one of the areas we're looking at so that they can understand that to get, even if they don't want to go to college, they need to have something that they can present to the employers that says, "I can learn, I'm a good potential, and I..." And I think that's a great idea to have a job fair. I'd really like to see us push to get that accomplished. And then we need more members on the committee. I know Pat, I've talked to you about having a mental health professional or on the committee. I thought you had given me a name, but I, she was not able to attend, but I would certainly like to get her at the next, at this next upcoming meeting so that we could kind of plan for what, what we could do. We don't want to try to step on the curriculum committee's toes. We're not trying to approach it in the business, in the fashion of telling you what to do with education. We're trying to look at other ways of keeping kids interested in the schools and try to address this learned, lost learning that we have experienced. So that's, that's where we're at right now. John, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's it Jim.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's about it.
And... Go ahead. I would just say Jim, I did indeed speak to the social worker at the high school who was expressed interest in participating. So John, I would ask you to reach out to her and find out if she is indeed available at, you know, for your next meeting. So she can...
Yeah, I certainly will do that tomorrow.
So, and I don't know, Pat, I don't know how we would, I love this idea of a job fair. It's not to hire anybody, but it's to show what's possible, I'm thinking. And I don't know how we would go about doing that. Do, would I come in and talk to you about it a little bit to get, I don't have, I don't really have a lot of good ideas for it, but maybe John and I could come in and talk to you?
Well, let's, let's kind of think about this. Mr. Kempton has spent time doing job, just career fairs in the past. I know we've had career fairs in the past at the middle school as well. This is not something that's new. So I think that we just kind of need to pull some heads together administratively, find out what we've done in the past, what's worked, what hasn't worked. And discuss really an appropriate timeframe for, for it with all that's going on. Truthfully, John, I'm not sure that it's something that can be pulled off this school year. I think we'd be really looking at next year.
I definitely was not thinking this year.
Okay.
I would very much like to see it. I would like to see it at the end of next year, but I would like to see it, maybe not at the very beginning of next year because that's a very busy time for staff and students, but maybe towards the late part of the first trimester, maybe we could think about it.
Yeah, we can certainly talk about it. And you know, we are beginning to hear that we should plan beginning next year with the same COVID safety restrictions that we currently have. So if we still have three-foot distancing requirements or six feet, you know, when, when masks are off, that will certainly impact anything that we can do around a career fair. In that regard, it might be better to wait till the end of the year when there are fewer restrictions.
Yeah, if, if the restrictions are still in place, by December, there's nothing we could do until the following calendar year. I just don't want to let it languish forever because I actually, there are a lot of kids that I think we could keep interested in school that really don't want to go to college, but don't see why they need to have a, a high school diploma when they can go out and work on a construction site. But frankly, their upward mobility is the most, the most they could hope for would be using a shovel and that's not a career.
Well, and as Angela noted, and I'm glad you wrote that in the, in the comment section, we also have a very active JMG program at the middle school and the high school. And so this falls completely in line with their mission. And so I would want to fold them in.
Yes.
And that they could help lead, lead some of that work.
I had mentioned the JMG at, at the, at our meeting and I thought that would be an appropriate person to get involved with this, if not lead it. So, but I, I'd like to see it happen if at all possible. Okay, thank you. That's about it for us.
Thank you.
Teresa, your hand was up?
Yes. Hi Jim, I think that's an absolutely awesome idea and I do have a few connections. So I'd like to talk to you about that. Maybe we can get something going next year.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to talk to you. It wasn't my idea, it was John's idea, but I think it was a great idea. So I'd be willing to talk to anybody about it. So thank you.
You're welcome. Great idea guys.
And Chad has put a couple of notes in the chat that pre-COVID, and I do remember this Chad, pre-COVID, we've had job fairs and they've been collaborated with Coney. So as soon as we have some lifted restrictions, we can, we can certainly get back to that, get right on that. And JMG of course is a wonderful resource. So excellent, excellent work. Thanks Jim. Next is the finance committee meeting and the, the minutes are not prepared for that. And now I know what to do with that. However, um, we do, Andrea, I'm going to need your help with this. Um, with the twenty-twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget discussion and the explanation of all the, all the worksheets, if you wouldn't mind.
I thought you just wanted me to, to add to what you were going to say. I think the easiest thing to say, Beck, would be that we continue to work on the budget and that substantial cuts have been made. And that we, yeah, go ahead.
And then, I mean, that's, that's really where we are. I mean, we haven't come to the bottom line yet, and not feeling like explaining the budget worksheets um, that you've given to us in the Finance Committee meeting would really be a great use of time.
But I think that anybody who might be interested in that discussion could go and um, watch our Finance Committee meeting as we went through all of those um, spreadsheets and, and documents, and those documents are available to them online. So that would be a good resource for them.
Great. Uh, I would suggest, however, in saying that we are nearing the end of the process. We are waiting for the um, the projected increase in health insurance benefits, because that will have a significant impact on the budget. And our rate is due by April sixth, so next week we should have a better idea on how much our insurance will increase or will not be increasing by. And we are receiving more and more information on federal monies. And the federal monies and how they can be used will also impact our, our budget. So we are hopeful within the next couple weeks um, that we will be in a better position to have the Finance Committee meet again and present a bottom-line budget for consideration.
So other items on the agenda were the carry-forward discussion. We talked about that briefly. And I updated the board on our carry-forward or unallocated fund balance. And that discussion is also a part of um, those, those minutes. Okay, do you want me to keep going, or are you gonna go?
No, I didn't. There's just not a lot more to say, right? It was mostly about the budget. Uh, and then the last thing we talked about was a donation for the, um, for the athletic um, games to, to Munsing Media. And does that need to come to the board for a vote, or we would need to wait till the minutes came out?
You do not have to wait for, for the minutes. It, it's not a donation. It is a, a payment, a contribution um, towards Munsing Media. Um, that was a recommendation that Munsing Media has without charge um, covered all of our athletic um, events throughout the year. Um, and there was the recognition that that is quite a costly um, expense for Munsing Media. And there was a request to make a contribution to cover some of those costs for him of um, five thousand dollars, which is significantly lower than what it would have cost us if he had been charging us per season, per game.
And that we propose that the funds come out of the athletic budget because of the reduced number of games that we've had. So we have, that's where we have the funds. The only other thing on finance was the governor's executive order giving us um, direction for our budget, our, the passing of our budget this year. Um, like last year, um, we're allowed to have a budget meeting within the constraints of the current CDC guidelines. We're also able, as an option, to have an online meeting and allow for um, comments and questions from the public, the same as we did last year. And the board is still working through with how they want to proceed with that.
And what that will look like. Thank you, Andrea.
You're welcome, Beck.
Um, any questions for the finance, about the finance meeting? Moving along then.
Um, Becky, with someone, I don't know that it is absolutely necessary, or, or, I, I don't know that it's absolutely necessary, but you asked the question as to whether the board should make a motion to compensate Munsing Media. I don't think you have to, but before you move on, I just wanted to make sure that um, you're in agreement that a motion is not necessary and that it falls within our authority to make that payment, since it will be coming out of the athletic budget.
And as far as a motion would go for me, I just want to make certain that we have the support of the board to make that, that contribute, that payment. Um, so I don't know if a thumbs up is really maybe all we need to do.
Great.
And I see all the thumbs. So, there we go. I feel better. I just want to make sure everyone's on, on board with that, and I think it's a great, a great thing that Munsing Media does for us. So, thank you very much, Rob Munsing. Uh, Policy Committee, there was no meeting. However, we have some policies. Um, Tony, do you want to take care of that?
Sure, thanks. Right, so no meeting, and actually I was not in attendance at the last meeting. But just full disclosure, so um, I do have a, a group of policies for second reading, which were voted on for first reading last time. Um, so a group for second reading, including the uh, policies, but then also the, the Leader Evaluation and Professional Growth Program Handbook. So if the board would accept my motion um, to, to approve the second reading of these policies and the LEPG handbook, I would be grateful.
I'll second that motion, Tony. So a motion from Tony and a second from Alyssa. Pat, would you please read the role?
Yes. Becky Flass.
Yay.
Veronica Babcock.
Yay.
Nancy Fortier-Brown.
Yay.
Teresa Garrett.
Yay.
Jim Lothrige.
Yay.
Nicole Madora.
Yay.
Matthew Marshall.
Yay.
Patrick Saucier.
Yay.
Alyssa Tracy.
Yay.
Colin McGup.
Yay.
Tony Beat.
Yay.
Quentin Martin.
Yeah.
Gwen Boldak Ignaziak.
Yay.
That's unanimous, Becky.
Great. Next, uh, on the agenda is the Hope Group update. Uh, we continue.
No, Becky, Becky, you missed Student Representatives.
Oh gosh, Student Representatives, I'm so sorry. I'm reading ahead, sorry. Quentin and Gwen.
Um, hi, so uh, currently at our school, um, spring sports have started, including lacrosse, baseball, softball, tennis, and track. Um, I know for at least personally, I play lacrosse, and we just got all of our game schedules, so that's really, really exciting. Um, it's really nice to have something to do after school again, and it's really nice to be able to be playing a sport, especially with how beautiful everything is starting to be, because it's spring. Um, also, um, the Mouse That Roared, the Spring Feeder Show at Garner Area High School is currently having rehearsals. They go up on May sixth, seventh, and eighth. Um, so that's going well. Um, also, uh, Garner Area High School is celebrating National Poetry Month, which April is National Poetry Month. So, um, there is a, a little night poetry being held on May thirteenth from five to six PM, where basically um, Garner Area High School students send in their own personal poems that they've written, and they get to share it. So that's a really cool experience. Um, also, uh, before I talk about the Poet Laureate um, competition, I would like to recognize and congratulate our current poet laureate, Stella Staples, for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Um, but the current competition being held for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two poet laureate is currently being held, where um, Garner Area High School students send in three of their original poems. And um, basically, they are picked to be the school's poet laureate. And so those poems for the people that want to participate in that competition um, need to be sent in by April fifteenth, in which then they will be picked, and the new poet laureate will be selected. Thank you. That's all I had.
That's really cool. Nice. Um, Quentin, how many games are you going to be able to play? How many lacrosse games?
Um, right, uh, if you just give me one second, I can count them. So currently, we have um, three scheduled preseason games, um, the first of which, uh, we have two on Saturday, which is a very exciting. And then regular season, we have one twelve, if I, if I just counted correctly, we have twelve scheduled games. So, yeah, that's really exciting. I'm really glad to be having a final senior year, uh, sports season. So, yeah, it's really awesome. Things are uh, looking up, for sure.
Excellent. Twelve games, that's a lot. Good. Excellent.
I just, I have a quick thing. Everything else was awesome. I don't really have much to add, other than I'm doing track this year. Um, I started a little bit late, but we have a couple meets, which is exciting. Um, and AP tests are coming out as well in May, I believe. I don't think there's any later than May, but most of them are right around the middle of May. That's all I have.
Excellent. Nice. Uh, yes, Alyssa.
Yeah, just a comment. I know, Quentin, I've seen a couple of fundraisers for your class. I just wanted to say, keep sharing them. I know I've seen a few different versions of them, so hopefully you do well in that regard.
Yes, so I know it, for at least, uh, JMG is hosting a cereal box drive, which is going until um, tomorrow, which is really awesome, where you can turn in um, three boxes to get one hour of community service. Up to, I believe you can turn in nine boxes to get three total hours. Um, but from what I have heard, they have raised uh, a lot of money. I'm not uh, sure, I'm not sure, like specifically, but um, I've heard at least that it's going very, very well. So I'm excited for that as well.
That's great. Anything else? Wellness Committee.
Sure. Um, we, the, the minutes were in the packet, I think, for these. We had a brief meeting. I was welcomed with open arms. It was very nice. Um, a colleague of mine that I work with at Tilson was actually on the meeting as well. Uh, there was already the agenda, and we were there as well. And we just went through um, some of the things happening this year. And um, the next meeting is going to be in May, and then they're, they're kind of every few months. Um, it was a smaller group, but it was, it was great to be part of, and uh, the notes are in here, so. Major comments there.
Excellent. Thank you, Alyssa.
You're welcome.
Um, now, Turf Committee. Um, we continue to meet weekly uh, with Gabe, Nate, and Chad um, and to go over our progress. Progress is being made. It's not super speedy, but um, but it is, it is happening. Um, the new goalposts, is that what they're called? They're goalposts. The new goalposts have been ordered. Um, the um, plans continue for the recognition wall, rec sales continue. Quentin, you have a question?
No, sorry, I, I don't have a question, but I just, I wanted to make sure, I just forgot to say um, the Tabby, the Tabby Hembry Legacy Foundation has raised over ten thousand dollars for my class. Um, and I am so, so, so thankful for that. Um, and because that is the type of thing that's going to help put on the end-of-year events for us. And I could not be more thankful for that entire family, especially um, Jen and Woody, um, who helped raise, just, i- i- it's just a truly wonderful thing, and I'm just so thankful. And I just wanted to make sure that um, I said that. So, thank you. Sorry.
Well, Quentin, that's one, that's, that's worth raising your hand over. Absolutely. That's absolutely, ten thousand dollars. Wow. That's wonderful. Well, thank you to the Hembry family. Um, and, and out of a tragedy to have such wonderful love and goodness for the community continue to, to show is really um, it's just really very kind. So, thank you to the Hembrys. And Jim, thank you to your family for for all that you do.
It's all them.
Well, I think you're part of the bedrock there, sir, so you can, you get a thanks also. Um, so, I, I can't top that with the Turf Committee, so I think we'll just keep moving on.
Could, can we just add one thing, though, with the, the Turf Committee?
Yeah.
I think that's really important for, for folks to know is that right now, all the logos from the donors have been submitted to the company. We're waiting for proofs to come back for, for those donors to actually sign off. And we just learned this week that the company has us in their schedule for the week of June first um, to start installing the carpet. Yay. And Black Diamond continues to work on finalizing a mock-up of a combined concession stand, storage unit, that would be in the same location as the old modular unit that's down there. So we would be looking at um, using the Board Disposition Policy to try to get rid of that modular unit. So, sorry, Becky, I just felt like people needed to hear that.
Well, that's fine, and that's, it's, that's actually where I was going, and then Quentin said his ten thousand dollar thing, and I completely, wow. So, yes, the logo, and the logos look really great. They're, um, they're very, we just asked for really crisp, clean um, photographs, so that they would be um, computer-ready, I guess is what it is. Um, and, and um, just seeing all the, all the different um, logos that businesses have, um, it's really kind of fun to see how they express themselves through their logos, and, and I think it's gonna just look fantastic. It's really great. So, thank you, Pat. Um, we have a couple of hands raised. Teresa, I think, was first, and then Veronica.
Just a thought, um, could we possibly raffle off the old goalposts as a fundraiser?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know enough about goalposts and, or any of that. Um, that would be a Nate or a Gabe question, I think, and I don't know that either one of them are still here.
I'm just thinking, some, some alumnis might, you know, be interested in, in purchasing them.
Yeah. I don't know. Nate, that, I, I.
Oh, I certainly can't speak for other people and what they would want to do with the old goalposts, but um, I would say if somebody wants to purchase it, they could approach us. Um, it, it comes apart. It's in, it's in pieces. Uh, it's also got, you know, concrete around the base that would need to be um, you know, kind of pounded off. Uh, I, I don't know if it would be worth it, honestly. It's just, that's my opinion.
Well, I think we have somebody already on the board whose husband would just love to bid on those nickel.
Oh, there we go.
So who wants to start the bidding? Oh, hi. Uh, Teresa, that's a, that's a very clever idea. Um, I, I don't know. Um, never thought of that. That's, that's really an interesting idea. Veronica.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because um, I know in the pack, the board approved for that modular to be used, for sports boosters to use it for a new concession shack. So what I hear you saying, Pat, is that they're just gonna build a new building with, for concessions and for storage. Yes?
Correct, yes. That's what we're looking to do.
That's even better. Thank you.
Isn't that nice?
Yeah.
Um, and I just tried to share, I hope it is projected, and you can all see it, that this is uh, the field, um, and you can see the logos um, that are embedded in the field. So you have your four main donors, EJP, Manex, McGee Construction, and Black Diamond. And those four companies alone have donated uh, roughly seven hundred thousand dollars towards this project, which this project wouldn't be in existence were it not for their donations um, in time and material. And then you have the Darlings, Kennebec Savings, GNI Roofing, um, the Hutchinson Family, Coates Construction, and Pine State. So, just so board members can see what it's going to look like.
Thank you, Pat. Those, I just think they're so pretty. They're so colorful. Thank you for.
You, you're welcome.
Uh, let's see. Oh, before we move on um, into the general information, I, I want to take a minute to Let's see, oh, before we move on into the general information, I, I want to take a minute to, I should have done it at the time, to thank John here. I just want to echo everything that, that Pat has said. Work ethic, hard work. Dedication to that, dedication to that staff and that building during a really difficult year. And it's been a difficult year for everyone, but I just want to especially thank John for all that he's done with the district and for the district. And wish you, John, the very, very best in your next, your next adventure. I hope that COVID will kind wherever you go. And that you, that you leave here knowing how much, we appreciate everything that you've done for us. It's really been a pleasure to work with you. So thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
You're welcome. New hires, general information.
As written, but I do want to highlight that one of the new hires is a bus driver. So we're happy to have Jeff Ellis join us as a bus driver.
That is
Yeah, the rest of the positions are for coaching positions.
Nicole's husband doesn't want the, the goalpost after all. He says we should keep it for a practice field, so.
No, he didn't say that. He's happy to take anything off your
Okay, you can make your own little football field at your house.
We have the original hook field wooden letters on the back of our garage.
Do you really? Oh, my gosh, he's a dedicated I'm so sorry. Sorry, we woke up.
Becky, before you move on, oh, never mind, I would say Veronica has her hand raised.
Yes, Veronica.
No, she didn't mean it.
Oh, she didn't, it was, okay, Teresa, is yours up for?
Yes, I just had a question about the coaching staff. So Ginger Snow doesn't get any type of payment at all for her work? Is that, I, I mean, I'm new to, I have no idea how that works, but I noticed that it doesn't look like she gets paid anything.
Ginger Shaw, she in this regard is a volunteer, so no, there is no compensation for volunteers.
So is that, like, the JV coaches don't get compensated, or is that just this situation?
If we have JV coaches and they're in our contract and we have JV teams, they are compensated. But in addition to having coaches, most of the teams also have volunteers. And the Main Principals Association requires that we notify the board and that I officially approve any volunteer who's going to work with students. So that's all we're doing is meeting that requirement and providing you with that notification.
Okay, I just, I'm very familiar with her coaching history and she's amazing, so I was just wondering. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see, update on the MSAT 11 instructional models.
Sure, this is a standard, of course, in every meeting. And wanted to take some time to let you know where, where we stand in really shifting to bring more students back into school four days a week. So as you recall from our meeting last month, the students in pre-K through two have already returned to school four days a week. Grades three through five were prepared to return on March 15th. So I'm going to ask those building administrators to give you an update on how that's going, having more students in their building. And then we also said that we would be looking at grades six through 12 to determine our ability to have them return four days a week sometime in April. So John and Chad are going to be prepared tonight to give you an update on the work that they've been doing behind the scenes with their staff and what our plans are moving forward, shifting to more in-person days for some of our students. So why don't we start off with Vicky? Vicky, the principal at the Riverview Community School, would you give an update on how the transition has gone for your kiddos and staff on that Riverview?
Sure, so we have been green now for two weeks. And it was a lot of planning going in place, kind of looking at our spacing in our classrooms and our lunchroom and the gym. Did we have to change anything with our arrival and drop off? And luckily, with all the planning we put in place, it was just tweaks here and there. I think the biggest thing was just like at the beginning of the year, it was just the fear of the unknown, how is it going to work out? So there was obviously some nervousness on both staff and students. But after the first week, you could just see relief. There were teachers that were really nervous about it, who said they were just so relieved not to have to make plans for three different learning models. And to have all their kids back in front of them, especially the ones they had been worrying about. It hasn't been without its bumps, it's like the first month of school. Our kiddos, even though they've been in school, they haven't been all together, so the dynamics have changed within the classroom. So there's some jockeying for space and, and, you know, a few little behaviors have upticked since we've started, but we expected that. I just think everybody's just relieved, it's, nothing is normal, but this feels as normal as we've had since the start of the school year.
Thank you, Vicky. Katie?
Yeah, you know, now hindsight is 2020. I'm not sure if we're far enough along to have hindsight at this point, but we really, in our building, had the advantage of increasing over time, right? Pre-K came at the end of February and then March, we brought in kindergarten for a second. And then, so we had a lot figured out along the way and we really had to lean into those routines and procedures that we had established and just figure out how to tweak them, to use Vicky's word, you know, tweak them to grow the, whatever the routine was, to be able to accommodate more kids. And so, again, like Vicky said, you know, the dynamics in every classroom are in the third, fourth and fifth grade classes have changed. You're bringing kids together, so they just need that. It's, it's like the beginning of the year again for them and their bodies are bigger and they take up more space and you definitely can feel it in the rooms. And we have our third, fifth grade, you'll remember, and so that definitely has eased the space restrictions within the fifth grade classrooms, and that has been really, really great. That smaller group with Mr. P is settling in beautifully and, and all of the, all of our students are really settling in beautifully. Again, I think we, the pace is super quick. We have to have this really choreographed sort of fluid rotation with an overlap at all of the parts of the day where we really like things to be a little bit neater. You know, at this time, these grade levels are doing this, and then here's the transition time, and then these grade levels come. And we have had to, that's a little bit blurry, I mean, it's blurry because it has to be, we know what's happening, but it's just, takes, it takes extra work and eyes to maneuver in that way because of the restrictions around, or the guidelines around distance. And, you know, kids naturally don't want to stay three feet apart, it's just not in their nature. And so that is just a constant part of the day now, is just giving constant reminders, back up, take three giant steps, everybody spread out, oh, remember, you know, we need some space. But all in all, things are settling, you know, we're settling into a groove and it really feels nice to be as close to normal as we've been in a year. Thanks.
Thank you, Katie. Christina?
Sure, you know, very similar to what Vicky and Katie have said. You know, I think that similar to HD, we had the benefit of bringing back K1 and 2 a couple of weeks ahead of our third, fourth and fifth graders. So that was helpful in terms of seeing what areas we might have needed to put a few tweaks in place. So it, you know, all the time that we spent putting those many, many plans and thinking through all the details, I think it's really paid off. It's been going pretty well, pretty smoothly, you know, a few minor adjustments to things like dismissal or our overflow room for lunch. We have our second, third grade, which is going really well. They're building a community with Ms. Diddy-O, who we put as the temporary teacher in there. She's been doing a really nice job. I think overall, the teachers are thrilled to have their students back four days a week. You know, they're, they're feeling like they're already seeing a difference in the learning that's happening, even though it's only been a couple of weeks. Families are happy, I know I've talked to some families that were a little nervous about sending their students back with, you know, having more students there, but they're feeling a lot more comfortable and they're, they're feeling good that the kids are back. You know, it's similar to what Katie and Vicky said, we have students who are having a little bit more difficulty adjusting to just the larger numbers and honestly, a little bit less attention from their teachers. You know, when there's six students in the class versus 12, it's just a different level of attention from the teacher. But overall, things are going really well.
Thank you, Christina. Any questions from board members before we shift to the middle school and the high school?
I just wanted to say thank you for, to all the teachers, the administrators, just for getting kids back into school four days a week. I've talked to some kids and parents in the community and they're just really excited to have the kids back. Kids are excited to get to see their other half of their classmates. So I just, I, that's been something that's been really important to me personally this whole year. I'm just really thankful you guys have done it and it seems like it's, you're making it seamless. We don't hear about the bumps and that just shows how professional you are and the great work that you're doing, leading your teachers through this process. So thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. And I think it's important to, you know, remind everyone again that we're in a different situation now that we were not in, in the fall. And as a result of some federal dollars, so that we've been able to hire some additional staff, we're, we're in the position where we're able to do this. Our, our ventilation systems have been updated. And so all of those factors, now that they were in place, we are able to make a greater shift of having more students back in, back in the classroom. Thank you, Veronica, that was, that was appreciated. How about John then? As I've mentioned before, the middle school and the high school is a different beast entirely. Some of the challenges that they face are not at all the same as the elementary schools, making it more complicated to have additional students in the buildings and to still comply with the minimum of three-foot distancing in the classroom, six-foot distancing for lunches and other activities if students' masks are off. So John, would you like to share some of the work that you and your staff have been doing and what you're thinking in moving forward?
Yeah, certainly. So as we started looking at bringing kids four days a week, Chad and I sat down and had some conversations about what a survey would look, look like and what the language within it would look like. So it was very clear to families that, you know, these are your options, please select cohort A, B, C or D. And that we would try to ensure that your choices were heard and, and families got each choice. And so I was a little nervous because if the survey didn't come out perfectly, then we would have to go to Plan B and how would we decide who comes in the four days a week and who doesn't? But the survey came out the way I needed it to, which was great. And so from that point, we created a spreadsheet, sent it out to teams. We, we calculated all the numbers in each cohort, determining how many kids would have it on the, on Tuesday, Monday and Tuesday, how many students would have on Thursday and Friday. And those combinations are the, you know, on Monday and Tuesday, it's cohort A and D together. And then Thursday and Friday, it's cohort B and D together. So just making sure those numbers jobbed and we sent them out to homeroom teachers because of capacity. We got a heads up from all team leaders that they could fit the capacity of the students that we received back from the survey. However, homerooms don't always matter because we have Allied Arts. And kids on teams in Allied Arts, those numbers grow a little bit. So we had to make sure that based on the schedule, fourth course, fourth quarter schedule for Allied Arts, that we had the capacity in those spaces. And we, we've had to make some adjustments. Some of the kids that came back, that are coming back from cohort C into cohort D. If we didn't have space in, in Allied Arts for a few kids, but to support them because some of the students we had in cohort C were struggling academically, we created two study halls, one for grade six and one for grade seven with some of those kids, so we could support them in a supported study hall as one of their Allied Arts. We're finishing up our scheduling for Allied Arts to make sure we're not going over capacity for those classrooms and for those activities. Phys ed was initially a challenge, but we decided to open up the fitness center for those rainy days because most of the time phys ed is outside when it's warm in, in the spring. So that helped us with capacity. From that point, when we realized we could fit students in with the capacity, we looked at the cafeteria. And initially, we thought we were gonna have to push kids to, to the outside. The challenge that would come about there is on rainy days, we'd have to push kids into classrooms, the overflow. Because in our cafeteria, we can fit 48 students and two staff members to, to monitor those students. And we would have had to push a lot of the teams, once we go into a green, more of a green mode, will be anywhere between 50 and 60. So we had a capacity challenge and we're gonna have to have kids sit outside on the nice days and in the classrooms. However, with the adjustment, now we can fit 50% of our cafeteria capacity rather than just 50 kids. And so that allows us to fit all 60, you know, 58, 59, 60 kids in the cafeteria at once. It allows us to have our staff to monitor those students in the cafeteria. And we won't have to use classrooms and take up those classrooms for the teachers that, you know, are having their own lunch and, and want that time to themselves. And then finally, today, we met with transportation and we talked about what it would look like. And could they support our efforts and the high school's efforts at the same time? Now, the only thing I'm concerned about right now is when the cars start dropping off kids the first day we do this and the buses start rolling in. Because as you know, the beginning of the year, parents weren't really prepared for dropping kids off in the back of the building. They were coming really early and so cars were piling up and we, you know, we, we checked and adjusted and ended up smoothing out within the first week or so. But it was, you know, it's a process and you have to see how it goes sometimes. You know, you can plan, you know, the best laid plans of mice and men and then things happen and you have to adjust. So I think we're gonna be in good shape. There's still some work to do, you know, organizing staff to welcome kids in, making sure there's enough staff in the hallway to keep kids three feet distance and making sure kids are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Getting the wiggles out in that first week will be helpful and then for, from that point, you know, I think we'll be okay.
So John, I'm sorry if I missed this, what, what day are you thinking that students can return?
Well, the middle school and the high school, Chad and I talked about the 12th. We're just not sure if transportation can be ready at that time because, you know, through our conversation, I don't know if Gabe had spoken to you, he was a little concerned whether he could start that day, but he certainly knew he could start the, the day after a vacation.
Yes, Gabe and I did speak and, yeah, he indicated the 26th.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm anticipating, that students in the middle school, high school will be able to return four days a week, starting on Monday, the 26th, but.
The great thing, the thing about that, that will just give us a little more time to make sure we are, you know, ready to open the doors, so.
Chad, you have your hand raised, but yeah, could you go into details for, for the high school? Yours is even a little more complicated than, than John's and his is pretty complicated.
Yes, it is, because I think as everyone knows from past conversations, all of our kids' schedules are independent of themselves. So we have to go and take every kid and place it in their classroom for each of their teachers. So you're going through 646 kids' schedules and placing them basically one by one into each of their teachers' classrooms to make sure that we have accurate numbers of how many kids would be in each classroom on both O days and B days on cohort On cohort A days and cohort B days. Um, and as John alluded to, our cohort A days, which are the Mondays and Tuesdays are now going to be the A and D cohorts. And the B and D cohorts will be on Thursday and Friday. So, um, I have to give a, a recognition. Jackie, um, Paray has been doing a ton of work with this. Um, she's churned and Jared made some spreadsheets, uh, for us to track both the, the maximum capacities of each of our classrooms. What they have for classes each period on O days and B days. We put the, you know, John and I put the survey out. We, at the high school, we had about 521 initial respondents. Which leaves us with about 120-ish people that we had to follow up with. And so Jackie and Jared and I have been following up with, um, you know, calling down kids and talking with them to get their survey response. For those that missed the survey or calling parents and checking in with them about what their response, um, would be. To make sure that we have everybody's, um, response, uh, included in our, in our calculations. So that has been an interesting, uh, challenge, I would say. But those two have just been doing a tremendous amount of work and doing great work. So when I look at the spreadsheet, I can see exactly how many kids are going to be in each classroom on any given day. We do have some areas where the capacity of the classroom and the number of kids outweighs that. And so we're looking for ways to, to overcome that hurdle. One of the areas that is problematic was the science classrooms because they have, um, desks, they have tables that two kids typically sit at, but the kids don't sit three feet apart because the tables aren't six feet apart. So in a conversation today that I had with our department chair, Mary Witten, in the science department, we came up with a plan to, to shuffle, as she did, and I thought it was great. So they have 12 desks or 12 tables. We're going to put two, six of the tables together, make an aisle for some individual desks. And we're going to be able to put four more kids in each of those classrooms based on, um, doing that. The kids will still stay three feet apart, but we're going to be able to squeeze four more kids in there. Uh, and it's just based on equipment because the individual desks in the classrooms, um, we can do that already. So the, the tables were problematic, but Mary came up with a brilliant idea. And so now we're in search of, of desks from the storage unit to make sure we can get them out of the storage units and bring them back into the science classrooms. So that now that we can have upwards to 17 or 18 kids in our science classrooms. So Mary came up big on that one. And, uh, it looks like it's a very doable thing in the areas that we have even more so. We're out, outdone our capacity. One of the ideas that we're looking at is having the kids in the building, but just taking the class remotely from another part of the building. What we don't want to do is have a kid that has, uh, has space in five out of their six classes. And science not be, for example, be a class that we're over capacity and, and say, well, you can't come back four days a week because we can't fit you in every one of your classes. So we're looking for an alternate place for some students to take classes in the building so that they can stay in the building for the four days or the two days that they've requested. So it's going to be thinking outside the box a little bit. But we will get it done. Um, as, as we always say, where there's a will, there's a way. And, uh, we'll do that. Um, in regards to our conversation with Dave today, given his circumstances and the number of drivers, uh, the shortage that he has. And the amount of information we're giving him, because, because we have our information, John has his information. Gabe gets all of that and wants to plug that into his bus routes. And so that is a, going to be a big task. So Gabe needed some additional time. Yes, we, we could be ready for the 12th, but if we don't have transportation, then we don't have anything in this situation. So. We, John and I were more than happy to, to say, look, another week is not going to break the bank. If we start after April vacation, it's not going to be the end of the world. We've been doing this for a year. And another week is not going to make that much of a difference, but it will make that much of a difference for Gabe. Cause it'll give him another week to, another two weeks to, to make sure that he's got all of his, I's dotted and T's crossed.
And Pat, I have three notes that I'd like to just kind of, uh, share really quickly. Uh, one thing regarding the, uh, delay, a week delay. And it's really only three instructional days for the board to know. It's Monday, Tuesday and a Thursday. So that's something to note. Uh, I also would like to, uh, really quick a shout out to the two guidance counselors, Amy Cole and Sue Oakland. Uh, their job is very difficult when you have to put a square peg in a round hole sometimes. And they've been doing a fantastic job with that. And, and for parents to note that, uh, if they initially didn't select cohort or they've changed their mind. Once, you know, we're, we're looking at capacity and, and we're really, really tight. But what we did do is we put a little, uh, a spreadsheet together as parents called with timestamps on it. So if a parent changed their mind, uh, we at least put them on a list. So if we can do it, we will, uh, as that time gets closer. And Kathy and Brenda have done a great job keeping track of that. Thank you.
I wanted to touch upon that and I, and I really have to emphasize that point. These classrooms are tight and the inclusion of one or two students will make a difference. And so we're not going to be as, we're not going to have the ability for students to fluidly move in and out of, um, remote instruction, two day a week hybrid model or four days a week. They're going to have to stay in the model that they selected. If there is an opportunity, um, that something changes and it, it, it opens up a slot, then that's, that's different. And we can try to accommodate, um, but generally families are going to have to stay with the selection that they made through the remainder of the year. Otherwise, we're just going to, it's going to put us back into a hybrid model or put us into remote. So because we just absolutely have to follow those guidelines. The other thing that I want to, to know, I do have an update later on, on transportation. But another factor with that is we had a driver who was out on personal leave. That driver notified us today, um, that there, she's going to be able to return and that return date will be April 26th. So that will allow another driver, um, out, um, in, I think it's Princeton Randolph area. So that will also help reduce the number of students riding those buses. So.
So Pat, one, one last thing from the high school is our next step. And, and John alluded to this a little bit, is that we're going to be drafting a letter to send out to parents and to students that will identify this is the cohort that you're going to be following from April 26th on. It was the one you requested. Uh, because we were able to basically re, um, grant everyone their request so far. And that way, we'll send it out directly to parents' emails as well as students' emails and a blind CC. So all the cohort A folks will get the same letter, all the cohort B folks will get the same letter. And all the cohort D and, uh, C and D people will get the same letter. Um, and we'll just send it out via electronic mail, um, and blind CC people. So. The beauty of that, if it gets right into their inbox and for us, it's not 50 or 60 cents. And a letter that's going out in the postal service and taking two or three days to get there. It's, it's immediate. And both staff and both students and parents get it right in their inbox. So that'll be our next step.
Administrators and staff have put in a considerable amount of time and effort to make this happen. They understand the importance of having students in school, in-person instruction as much as possible. So I would like to express my appreciation for all of the administrators K through 12. For all of the time and effort that they've all put in, make this happen for, for students and for families. I think you've heard over the course of the last two or three months, how complicated this is. It, it's not easy and just saying we open the doors, allow these students to come back, we must follow those guidelines. And there are, um, there are factors that we must take into consideration and it's not necessarily easy. Um, at all times trying to figure out the coverage for students, the square footage, how many students you can have in a space. Think about the transition in the hallway. Think about the cafeteria, um, space. And so we're in a position now that we weren't before because some of the guidelines have changed. And, and as I said before, because of this, some of the federal funding. But I, I certainly wish to, to thank the administration very publicly for, for all of their efforts.
And for doing, and for making all of these efforts within all the guidelines, staying within the three feet. I, I mean, that's just such a, I'm just so happy to, um, work for a district where we observe all of that. And, and whether we love it or not, it's really not the relevant part, but that we're doing it and that students come first and the safety comes first. So thank you all very much for that. So we've covered all the administrators. Yes, we're all there. So new bookness, um, student data presentation.
So I'm going to turn this over to Angela to do a presentation, um, on some data that we have collected. And she has compiled, um, regarding, um, students' performance and, and how's that going? There's been a lot of talk about learning loss and what is learning loss? What does that look like? What does that even mean? And so Angela is prepared, um, to present some information to maybe answer some of those questions.
Thank you, Angela.
There we go. Try it again. Great. Thank you. When I do this, I, I'm not set up tonight to see you and see the presentation. So I will ask Becky or Pat, um, if I don't notice that someone's hand is raised and they'd like to, um, pause and ask a question to just call my attention to it verbally, that would be super helpful. Thank you. Cause I definitely want to make sure that if you have questions as we go along, that they can be answered. So I will present. Just making sure. Okay. You should be able to see it. Great. So, um, I'm going to present in two areas, literacy, which is English language arts. So reading, writing, language usage, speaking and listening. And in math, because those are the, um, two areas where we have, um, the most recent data available. In literacy, the tool that we use universally in the district is called NUIA or Northwest Evaluation Association. We've been using this for many, many years, over a decade. And it's just a reminder that, I'm not sure anyone really needs to be reminded, but this, the data I share will reflect, um, learning through the spring physical closure due to the pandemic. And then, um, from fall to winter, where we've had either hybrid or remote learning, depending on the cohort of students. This first table, this first data illustrates student growth across a period of time by grade level. And it compares, um, it to grade level norms for projected growth. The key here is to be looking at the blue bars. Um, the blue bars represent, uh, learning that is at or above grade level. Oh, actually, yes, at or above, because they've met their projected growth. I've got to stop reading my notes and just do this. Um, and the yellow diamonds are the national norms for projected growth. As defined by Northwest Evaluation Association. And they do update their norms routinely, including, um, in 2020. Uh, so as you can see here, from fall 2019 to fall 2020, where we had, um, the spring closure in March through, uh, September. Our lower elementary grades did not meet their projected growth because they were assessed in the fall. So they had six months of time without direct instruction. Um, and our upper elementary grades did. So we, what we really want to see is, um, significant growth with those lower grade levels. We had students back in the fall, um, and we assessed them again in January. And what we're seeing here is that kindergarten, while they're not at the norm. And I can, we don't have kindergarten data fall 19 to fall 20 because they weren't in school yet for fall 2019. So there's no data there. Um, but for fall to winter, kindergarten is making progress towards, um, some expected growth. And first grade and second grade are getting, have caught up or getting much closer to their projected growth. Third grade across the district has made significant observed growth. Um, and fourth grade is remaining steady with fifth grade actually declining a little. So we have some focus there. And I think I heard a beep. So is there a question?
Hi Angela, how does this stack up against the prior year? Pre, pre pandemic?
Pre pandemic. Um, so I have all that. Let me see. I can't remember if I actually included it. Um, I did include it. So I'm, I'm going to actually show you that. Cause it's a little more complex than just saying it's comparable or not comparable. Uh, cause it depends on our grade levels. I can, I can give you one quick thing. Historically in the district, third grade and fifth grade and seventh grade are grade levels where we have, um, the most difficulty having our students meet their projected growth. That is like seven years running. There seems to be, um, something, it seems to be something to do with the level of complexity that changes in the standards and the expectations in those grade levels. And we seem over a two-year period, like third and fourth grade, were able to bring those cohorts back to their academic expectations. They just seem to need more time. So what's really fascinating here is that, um, third grade is already meeting their projected growth, uh, this winter. Fifth grade is where they typically are. And I'll show you here. We did not end up assessing the middle school this winter. So we did in the fall using NUIA as we usually do. Usually we assess fall, winter and spring. We chose not to assess this spring, I mean, sorry, this winter with the middle school. Because the timing of the open window for assessment also ended up coinciding with when we shifted from hybrid learning to synchronous learning. And there was so much, um, change and disruption, um, to ensure that, that went smoothly for students. That we didn't feel comfortable taking away the instructional time, um, for an assessment. From someone in my position, at the time it made sense. Now, of course, it's disappointing not to have the data. But I do think we did the right thing for the students and the staff. We will most definitely be conducting this assessment in the spring and looking closely at our fall to spring data. To see how that pans out. For the fall to fall data, we are pleasantly surprised to see that sixth and seventh grade had retained a lot of learning from their prior years and, um, were able to demonstrate that on their assessment. And eighth grade was meeting the, or just about meeting the projected, um, growth norms as well. So that bodes well for moving, um, through this academic year in literacy. This chart's a little bit more complicated. Um, and I wasn't sure I was going to share it, but I, I'm going to. So there's two sets of data here. It's all based on literacy. And the colors is probably what's going to throw you off. The green lines, um, indicate the percent of students who met their projected growth, fall to fall. And so if you look at the number 40 to the left and then you look. And so if you look at the number 40 to the left and then you look down, you'll see it says 111. What that means is this isn't showing you classrooms. But these are showing a first grade at one of the, a collective first grade at, we'll say it, I'm not, at one of our buildings, a collective first grade at another building and a collective first grade at another building. So rather than an aggregate of the entire district, this is showing you three different buildings of multiple classrooms per building. And you can see straight away that our whole first grade cohort has done very well, meeting their projected growth from fall to winter. So this really is a way to show you growth differently. The most significant, I don't know if you can see my cursor, is the third group over. Is that they came in with about meeting about 21% of the students meeting their projected growth. And they are at 78% as of the winter. That is very significant. And you can see each first grades, each first grade cohort has stepped up. In second grade, if you look at the next three numbers, you can see here's the second grade and then it drops. And that sec, that particular second grade cohort across one building came in with a lot less retained learning. But they've grown significantly. That orange right up to the line there is just under 40. So they've made significant growth as well. And each second grade cohort has made nice significant growth. And then you can go to the third grade where they're also making quite significant growth. And then this is where it gets a little bit interesting. Fourth and fifth grade, the green goes in the behind and above. So they had some pretty decent retained learning. One of the keys we look for is 61% growth, projected growth. As, as one of our markers, our benchmarks. And so they're coming in, many of the, you know, a few of these classrooms are coming awfully close to that. And this goes right up through eighth grade. But the fall to winter data drops. And what we're trying to understand is why that is. It could be as they're moving through the year, the material is more sophisticated. And it's just taking them longer. It could be some, at that developmental level, they're really struggling with the hybrid learning. The, what teachers like to say is like two Monday approach. You know, they, they have two days on and five days off and they're coming back. And it's just a little disruptive for that group to get in the, in the swing. And we're not at the foundational level anymore. We're moving through really complex material. So we're not entirely sure. We're looking to see what happens in the spring. I will promise you that the teachers have all been looking at their data with their principals closely and much more granularly than we're showing so that they can adjust their instructional plans to support their students effectively. So this is a little bit different and this might get to, it's a little bit more complicated, but it does get to growth over time. And so this is starting to look at a cohort. So if you see, normally we have, we have three cohorts because we have three buildings with kindergarten. But one of our buildings in this particular year didn't assess. They were in a, there was a reason for it and the district excused them from assessing that particular year. And so we have one building, multiple great classrooms in that building. Tracking from fall 1819. So you can see that they, I, I coded it as a red. In first grade, fall to fall, they're tracking at 21. But then between fall and winter with hybrid learning, they're already jumping all the way up to 57% meeting their projected growth. So this group is doing quite well. This group came in at 49, it dropped to 32, but now it's right back to 47. And we've already been in four days per week for a month. So we're looking forward to seeing their spring growth. And then we only have this group here. Once, we don't have their kindergarten data and so they came in around 38, not, not too different from the other first grade classrooms. And there, they've made growth up to 78% of their projected, 78% of the students have met their projected growth. So that's incredibly significant and very promising for our district. And here, in this particular year, only one first grade. At the lowest level, sometimes there were some decisions made over time about testing students digitally. So there's a little bit of disruption a few years here and there. So we only had one building assess in first grade in that particular year. Then they went into second grade. They have nice, strong numbers here for their projected growth. Then they went into third grade with our physical closure and it was, you know, what, it, it didn't really help them. They, they, they struggled in third grade. I told you historically, third grade is a really challenging year for us in our district. And we've been spending some time working on that. But already we have cohorts making growth. They went from 12% to 60% by the winter. That is very significant. And of course, we still have from January through June with these students with half that time doubling their instruction that they've been having all year. So we're very excited about that. And and these other two grade levels are also making good progress. Or yeah, grade levels per building. And then another one here is again, third grade where we typically have lower numbers despite lots of efforts. And then moving that same cohort into fourth grade, pre pandemic. They've, they're making progress with 65 is a great, it's, it's past our benchmark. And then we have the fall, the fall where they've had pandemic and physical closure. And they still manage to get closer to the benchmark and one group, one whole building exceeding it. But that same group has had a really rough fall to winter. And we're, we're unpacking this to try to understand what it is. Because the instruction across all three buildings and the formatting has been really similar. So we're, we're looking into this to, and we've layered in a bunch of supports to try to make sure these students have what they need to make some significant growth. We, and then just because some people might want to, might be interested in this, this is not a chart to look from grade level to grade level. NUIA uses something called a RIT score and it's actually kind of like climbing a ladder. And so you want those bars to get higher as they get through the grade levels. So in this case, what I'm trying to show you is in kindergarten on the areas that they're assessed, foundational skills, language and writing, literature and informational text and vocabulary. How are they doing comparatively across the four domains? Not surprising at all, kindergarten is lower in their foundational skills. But that's what we would expect for kindergarteners coming in. Foundational skills is phonics, phonological awareness and concepts of print. And their strongest, this, this year in vocabulary. And then you can see in first grade where that lands and in second grade where that lands. Vocabulary a little bit stronger. So there'll be some extra work on shoring up some of the foundational skills and some of the language usage and writing craft. And then this looks at it from grades three through eight. Their assessment is, is it's a K to two assessment and then a two plus assessment. So grade three through eight, a, a, two plus up to grade six and then grade six is six plus. But they fall in with the same categories. And you see they, the literature is broken up into two categories. Informational text is broken up into two categories and then vocabulary. And again, what you're looking at is across one grade level rather than across all. This is good that they're going up. That means we're making steady progress. And what we look here for is like in third grade, they need some work on vocabulary. It's a very tiny slim mark, mark, marker there in third grade under vocabulary. Whereas in fifth grade here, you can see their literary text on ideas, key ideas and, and detail is stronger than their informational text. So maybe shoring up some of their informational text will help them. Before I go into math, are there specific questions about literacy? Because that's a lot of information.
Angela, just a comment. Amazing. I love the data. You know that. I appreciate your effort there. Do we have any sense from NUIA? Are they giving you like a boundary of, because of? You know, I know when kids test, like you mentioned, some of the younger grades, the teachers reading them the questions, right? And then as they get older, they use the technology themselves. Has there been any change in like the delta up or down that would impact that? Or I don't know how to articulate it better than that, but is there more impact in that because of?
Alyssa, you're cutting in and out just a little bit, but I think I'm getting what you're asking for. Or I can answer in one way and I might not know in the other. The test does change. It does read a lot more to the student in the K to two test. And this is one of our theories when it comes to the grades two plus tests that we use in third grade and up. Because it does not have the same auditory features that the K two test has. And so we, one of our assumptions that we're testing is that students stamina, their, their willingness to persevere through passages. And their willingness to, and ability to attend to some of the complex language structure that's set up in that two plus test has to be pretty independent. And so for us, we're, one of our assumption is that in third grade where we historically have lower scores. Our students aren't really, they're, it's a barrier that, that lack of support, layered support has, has reduced our ability to show what they know and can do. And, and also illustrates that we have some work to help them build that level of independence, stamina and skill. But we definitely think that's one of the areas in third grade. In fifth grade, we're not as sure. I am still honestly, as, as much of time as I've spent looking at our data across seven years at this, I've gone back seven years. There are still a lot of questions and there's still some features of the assessment that I'm still understanding. And I've been using NUIA for over 20 years in my work. So I'm not sure. I know there might be some technical aspects that I can't speak to tonight, but I'd be happy to pursue. Does that at all answering your question, Alyssa? Some of your question?
Alyssa? Maybe she can't hear you, Angela. I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, no, thank you. Perfect, Angela.
Okay.
Thank you. I know I get wonky too. So I heard you though. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Before I go into math, are there other questions?
Hey, it's Tony. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I think on the last slide, right before we switched to the math slide here. It showed the, the third grade, yeah. Is that what you're talking about? That their knowledge base is not being reflected well in the testing?
Yeah. And really, when you, I'm going to skip back for a minute, Tony.
Sure.
Well, one, like you can see here, year over year, this is just one cohort we tracked through. But I've tracked through seven years of cohorts and year over year, we're finding this in third grade. That we're, we get better by the spring, which is great, which means we're, we're making, we're making progress in all areas, including their facility with the digital assessment. That has to do with significant reading. But you see how we have here the 19 to 20, that's not entirely uncommon to have a gap like this in our third grade assessment.
Okay, yeah.
In some districts, it's second grade. In our district, it's, it's third, it's been third grade historically. It is not a, I just try to be clear, it is not a reflection of the work that our teachers are putting into their instruction. It is, it is because it's such a long-term issue for us. It's, it's certainly something to do with, probably with some curriculum and some systems. And, and thinking developmentally about our students and what that, what we need to shore up earlier. So they're, they're better prepared.
Thank you. No, interesting thread. Yeah, great graphics. Thank you.
Okay, math.
No, I just, Angela, I just wanted to speak to what you're saying about that. As somebody who's administered the NUIA for years, the K two that we administer in our building is, it's more colorful. It, it reads to the kids. And then when they hit third grade, there's no pictures. It's tiny words. So it is a much different test than what they've been used to. So I can see how the scores correlate with the type of tests they're being asked to take, especially in the fall when they come back to school.
Yeah, our spring data does show growth, which is helpful. And they've had two more experiences with the assessment since their fall data. So thank you, Veronica. I appreciate your perspective. So in math, at the elementary level, we use something called the eye ready diagnostic or eye ready universal screener. We've only switched to that two years ago. Part of the reason we switched actually is for the reason that Veronica just stated. We wanted to find a tool that was a little bit more student friendly across the board. Kindergarten to fifth grade, not just at the K two level. And we find that the eye ready has a fair number of aids built into the system. So for example, it does have more auditory features. As the students get older, those are kind of opted in as accommodations. But they are available when necessary. And there are, there are more tools that are virtually available. And we can use this in, well, it's actually been incredibly easy to use in our remote setting. That was a bonus. We didn't plan for that, but it was a, it was even easier. The NUIA is, is fairly seamless in a remote environment, but the eye ready is even easier. And the reporting features that the teachers get were more what we needed prior to implementing a math curriculum. And it really helped inform some of our thinking. So we do have a different screener for math in kindergarten to fifth grade. Like the same features as the impact of the pandemic, except for in math, there's a couple new pieces. We implemented a new math curriculum this year of all years and a new math program. And if anyone knows anything about implementing new curriculum and programs is that there is a learning curve for students and for staff. And there's usually developed routines and language that come with an implementation of a new program. And it takes that first full year for everyone to become more confident and comfortable in that. So it's usually a one, a two to three year window, usually three years for your data to really start shifting and for you to build that year over year experience with the sequence of instruction that's been redesigned. So we are in year one. So that's an interesting year to start something new. The teachers have been great about it though. So the, what's unique though is we've used the same universal screener or diagnostic across the last year of our last program and the first year of this program. And this is part of the report and I'll just walk you through it quickly. The top bars are from fall to winter 2020. So last year's fall to winter, rather than going from fall through fall, for pre pandemic. And we give three diagnostics a year. So the third one would have been the spring, but we didn't give it last spring. And the, the thin bar is the first diagnostic, that would be the fall. And the upper bar is the winter one. So what this basically shows is we grew the number of students from fall to winter in their green, which is on or above grade level. And we decreased the number. And we decreased the number of students in red, which is two to three grade levels below by, from fall to winter. Winter was January, so they were still in school for two and a half more months after this diagnostic before the pandemic hit. This year, the fall to winter assessments, we also grew the number of students on grade level and above grade level. And we also reduced the number of students two to three grade levels below. In both years, there's a significant number of students that are considered one grade level below in the winter. To look at that data a little bit differently, if you look on the left side, these are students who are struggling, so they're below grade level. If we look from year over year, we had an increase in struggling learners. And then if we compare that to fall to winter, so and if we, if we narrow it and we look at just the scope of fall to winter, we've doubled the number of, no, we've reduced in half the number of students that are struggling from, from September to January. So that's why there's a green arrow. So we're making good progress. And if you go to the right side, you're looking at the students who are at or above grade level. And so if you're looking, we have two years of data now. We are decrease, we decreased, but that was with pandemic. But we've also doubled the number of students that are increasing in achievement. I don't think I said that well tonight, but in other words, we're making great strides. Sorry. And at the middle school, I'll show you sixth grade, sixth grade did, took the I Ready in fifth grade. And they took the NUIA in sixth grade. So we clearly don't have a bar showing here. So the seventh and eighth grade, when they came in and we looked at their growth from fall to fall, they were not yet at their expected projected growth for math. But they weren't terribly far behind. So there is some opportunity for us by the spring to move their projected growth. We did find a way to compare I Ready and NUIA thankfully. And red and orange is, you know, red, orange and yellow is below grade level. And green and blue is at or above grade level. With I Ready, it's kind of like a bell curve. And with, and then they came in with NUIA and you can see on the green and blue, so at or above grade level. Fairly steady. Those students stayed fairly steady when you, across the two tests. And our issue is that represented in NUIA, the students who were behind fell much further behind. And so we're hoping that in sixth grade with the hybrid and then the synchronous and hopefully soon to be the more in person, we're really going to be able to move those students further up the continuum towards meeting. We're almost done. And then someone wanted to see some national historic. We only went back one year because, well, one with I Ready, we only could. But just for clarity here, national is represented by the I Ready, by Curriculum Associates who run I Ready. That would be the light gray bar for historic or 1920 winter, the national norms. And then our light green bar is the number of students who are at or above grade level last winter. And then you can see the national current winter, this winter's national data set and our winter national, I mean, our winter data set. So in first grade, last year, we were below the national historic set of data. And this year, we're actually above it. Interesting. In second grade, last year, we were below and this year we're also below, but at about the same rate. In third grade, both years we're below, but you can see it's not significantly different over two years. But we'd like to see that grow consistently, that dark green bar keep moving up. So you can see in third, fourth and fifth grade, we continue to have some work to do there. With a new math curriculum, that's going to be really challenging to pull those numbers up quickly. Because again, they're not gaining the sequence of instruction that they in this program from kindergarten through fifth grade, they're gaining it from their entry point forward. So we're, as we identify gaps in their understanding, we're working to close those gaps. It's just going to take a little bit longer. And then this is just the reverse way of looking at that. These are students who are below grade level as compared to the national data. You want the bars to be shorter, not longer. So shorter than the gray shows that we're, we're moving those students closer to grade level readiness. Longer than gray means we probably are doing a lot of extra supports in those classrooms. And then just quickly again, to see where our strengths are across our domains. In algebraic thinking, our strength is in first grade. And fourth grade, the strength was also algebraic thinking. Geometry is a strength for kindergarten, first grade, and then we actually keep going down. Part of that is geometry in the upper grade levels is something that we tend to teach in the spring. And then last year's spring was canceled. And so some of it was taught with family supports or supports from childcare centers, but not in a consistent, ongoing way. And then the other feature about math data is that I'm sure, especially in the lower grades, we were relying on a fair amount of family support for students to make continued progress, and that is wonderful. But the way our math curriculum is set up is different from the way people experienced it going to school years ago. Where we used to learn what we call the algorithm or the procedure first and try to become really skilled at that and move forward. And now we work really hard at learning the concepts and the way math is represented differently and then work towards procedures. So they have some grounding in some of those foundational concepts because they are revisited in more complex ways as they move through. And if our students are kind of skipping those steps and going to procedures, because that's what, what people know who can support them, that's great, but we're also accepting them on their, on their readiness around concepts and representations. And so therefore they might not do as well in those areas. And then sixth, seventh and the eighth grade, again, in this one, look within the grade level. Don't worry about the bars going up from left to right, but within the grade level. And you can see in sixth grade, their strength is statistics. In seventh grade, an area of need is geometry, as it is in sixth and eighth. And in eighth grade, a strength is the number of systems and then working on that. So actually the middle school team met about a month ago to just re, take one more look at their fall data and just see if they wanted to calibrate some of their instruction, change some of their instruction in order to better ready our students for kind of that holistic end of year experience. Math questions. Sorry, I'm trying to be efficient, but.
I have a question and I want to, I want to, I'm wondering if I'm looking at it right or thinking about it right. So what, if I understand you right, what you're saying is that what we're doing now is the deeper learning, trying to teach them the concepts of how we get there rather than how we did it years ago, where you just memorized it and you just kept doing it till you got it right. Am I understanding?
Yeah, think of it like Nicole's braiding her hair. So that helps me. Think of it like a braid, right? We used to only take one of, sorry Nicole, you were right there. We used to only take one of those strands and focus on that. We focused on procedures, right? And so we knew the math facts and we know how to do the Pythagorean theorem and, right? A squared plus B squared equals C squared. We know those things. But the problem is when, when to apply those is sometimes a challenge. If you don't also understand the other two strands, like what's the concept behind that? And what is, how is that represented in different ways other than, you know, how do you get to six? Three plus three. Whereas some kids need to understand they can get to six by one plus two plus three. And that there are visual ways to look at numbers that aren't just the number itself. And my math coach would be much more efficient discussing this, but what we want is to do that because then students can grasp the learning, one, in deeper ways. And two, if they don't understand it in that procedural way, they'll likely understand it through a spatial representation or connection to more authentic application. And then they'll get their way through that, they can get to the procedure and then, and make, make the braid, make it all come together. That like, that's really important in fractions, parts, parts of a whole. And then moving up and understanding how those fractions are represented over another and how that looks visually. And then building that up as you move up into decimals and how those are connected to fractions. And then you can keep moving through. If, if students understand them in isolated ways, they likely won't be able to carry it forward and, and may actually get frustrated with math and not like math or not think they're good at it. When in fact, they just might not have learned in the way that's most effective for them.
That's exactly what I was trying to ask, but I wasn't.
Yeah. And just to be clear, if parents are listening, we still teach procedures. We just choose to teach them at a different pace, a different time. There's certain times when the procedure is held till the next year. And there's certain times when the procedure is just held off until we move through these steps, but in the same year. And some of our assessments now actually assess for those other elements. So if they only know the procedure, then they get caught up in some of those pieces.
Thank you, Angela.
Yes. And then just this leads us to spring assessments. So what we're looking forward to is understanding, how did our students do this year? We've had a lot of change going on, as you all know. And I'm sure our families would like to know how they're doing as well. We're just coming off of parent teacher conferences. And so by the time we get to June, we'd like to know what our, you know, what kind of growth we've had. Would like to use the data to help us kind of check on our curriculum for next year to make sure that when students come back, we start where they're at and move them forward in an appropriate manner rather than assume they know something that they may or may not have gotten to this year. The data and the teacher's experience collectively will help us make those decisions. So there's a few ways that data gets collected in our district. We have those assessments that we just talked about. We also have state assessments that will be conducted this year. And, and they're all new to the state. So in ELA and math, it's called NUIA. And lucky for us, it's the same assessment we're already using in most places in our district. The benefit is we'll be adding it into the high school. For this spring, we'll be adding it to, for the third year in high school. For most students, that's 11th grade, but the third year that students are in high school, they will have an opportunity to take the ELA assessment and the math instead of the required SAT. We are offering an optional SAT on April 13th. But we will add this assessment in. The SAT is about four hours long and the NUIA is about 45 minutes long. So we are changing the amount of time that we are spending assessing students and still collecting really actionable data. We get the data from NUIA immediately. And when we close the assessment window, we can look at that data in a, in an aggregate way across the whole district. So that's really powerful because our state assessment data doesn't usually come back until sometime in the mid fall after students have already started up their next school year, and this data will be actionable. And then the other change is our science assessment. It's still the same grade levels, five, eight, in the third year in high school. It's still about the same timeframe. And the difference is it's a different type of assessment, which we're all learning about still. And it's moving from paper and pencil to digital. And it has a new vendor, so it will be considered a field test. So the, the data will be important to us, but it won't hold us accountable. However, we do expect that at least 95% of our students participate in our assessments. That's really important to us. It gives us a much better picture about how our students are doing. With our NUIA assessments and our I Ready, those will be conducted both in person or digitally. So if students are in remote, we will be able to continue just as they have in the fall and winter. For our science assessment, we will only conduct that for students in person. So this is just something the administrative team and the, and the teachers are working through. These are the windows when assessments will be happening. A family letter will be going out the week of April 12th with greater detail and clarifications in preparation for the rest of the assessment season. And then this is just another indication or comparison of that amount of time. We didn't have spring assessments last spring because we weren't physically open. But the spring before, the amount of time we typically spent on assessments and the amount of time we will be spending this spring on assessments, and we anticipate the data will be efficient and accessible. And so it will truly inform our next steps. And that's what I have to share.
I liked a term that you used, assessment season.
Yeah, yeah, we're just slow because it won't impact the amount of time students can have directly focused on learning. Assessment data helps us with their learning. So it's important we have the assessments. It's just really wonderful that the, that it's, it is efficient for, more efficient than it has, than it has been recently.
Right, correct.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or? All right then. Let's see, plans for graduation and for prom?
So I've asked Mr. Kempton if he would just give a brief update for the board and for the public on the current plans for a graduation this coming year and potentially a prom. So Mr. Kempton?
So I've been talking with the director up at the Civic Center in Augusta and Earl. And they have the ability to host an indoor graduation. Right now their capacity is around 650. And I'm just moving to a different part of the house. About 680 people. So that would be something that we'd be able to do in indoor graduation. He's hoping with guidelines that are coming out, that he'll be able to increase that to around 1100. And that would certainly give us plenty of room to set up the Civic Center for our indoor graduation. So the plan is to do graduation indoors at the Civic Center. And that would give us again, more of a normal routine for, for graduation. So I also have been meeting with a group of parents of seniors. They call themselves the Mama's 21 or 2021. Super nice group of people and they were part of that group that Quinton talked about that raised the $10,000. So we're very fortunate this year to have a group of about 26 parents that are very active, very motivated in helping out the class of 2021, celebrate their success. So that group is going to be helping us with both prom and with graduation this year. And we've talked about the celebration after graduation. We just did a survey of the senior class. Right now, I just looked at it a few minutes ago and there was 113 out of 140 seniors that had responded. And right now, doing a parade and fireworks was the favorite. And that actually is something that the group talked about last night. And so we're going to move forward with doing a, like we did last year with a parade and fireworks. And uh, so we're gonna move forward with doing a uh like we did last year with a parade and fireworks after graduation. And so we're just gonna time it out, uh get some pricing for the fireworks. Uh, we've got to put a permit into the city of Gardner for the parade and all the events that are gonna go with it in this group will certainly help us in doing that. So we're really gonna work backwards. We're gonna see what time the fireworks needs to be and then we'll plan out the the parade. Just prior to that and our thought is is that the parade can start out at the business park like we did last year. And then come down into town and then um have the fireworks, you know, down on the waterfront. And so prior to the parade, we'll we'll set the time for graduation and as I said, Earl is is ready to go with a with a ceremony like that. So that will bring us back to a more traditional graduation and the the celebration. What I'm really excited about is that it's more of a community celebration graduates versus private celebration with a project grad. So it gives everybody a chance to celebrate, you know, our our most recent graduates. So I'm in a pretty grand here with the fireworks that we had last year. If there were anything similar to that, it would be awesome. So so that's the plan for graduation. Did I, anything else that I should mention, Pat? So prom, uh, we're also looking at a prom and we're just looking for a date. I've talked around with other area principals with Mark Tankham over at Haldale, Kim Silsby up at Tony. And the plan is to do it somewhat closer to uh June or the graduation timeline. That will allow us with the opening, May twenty-fourth is the date that um the CDC and the state opens up. Their their allowances, I guess, from fifty percent to seventy-five percent. So after May twenty-fourth, gives us a little more flexibility on an indoor event. And so there's no other venues other than the gym to have a prom, so we're gonna decorate the gym. Like we have in the past at several different years and we'll have a prom uh for for our kids. You know, sometime late May, early June. That may be the Thursday before graduation, it may be the Friday before graduation. We haven't really decided yet, but that that's on our to-do list for next Wednesday's meeting. And again, it's a pretty great group that that I've been able to start working with the other last couple of weeks.
And Chad, class day, class day most likely will be a virtual event, correct?
Yeah, I think what uh last year we did a class day and we we taped, we taped it or pre-recorded it and put it out. What I'd like to do is switch it over to a live stream event so that we're live and we can still record it. And so if anyone misses it, they can go back and watch it, but I'd like to do a live stream for our academic awards and our class day. Get it to be a little bit more in a traditional sense, but um it would be pretty challenging to do class day with a hundred and forty. Graduates in the in the gym with trying to space people out six feet apart. It just wouldn't work and we'd be. Preventing some people from doing it. So I think if we do it virtual this year, that'll be a step in the right direction. And then hopefully the following year we'll be able to get back into our traditional mode.
That sounds, that sounds great. That sounds so so nice, a step toward normal. Thank you, Chad. Questions for Chad, comments? Thank you. Uh, let's see, approve approve the expansion of the STEPS program.
This was discussed in the most recent finance committee meeting. I have Alicia who is here prepared to to speak to it. Again, STEPS uh is our autistic program that is currently housed at LER. For grades K through two and we are looking to expand that program to K five and move it over to the Helen Thompson School. So Alicia, I saw that you have joined us. Can you speak to this program a little bit more?
Yeah, sure. Um, can you hear me okay? Okay, I just I have my camera turned off because I seem to have better reception when it's off. So STEPS, like Pat said, STEPS is our autism program that is housed over at LER, which is a K-two school. Um, oftentimes STEPS will will keep students for their third grade year. Um, and this is because there is no programming in grades three to five for students that would require a program. The third year at LER would give um a a year for transition for students to transition out of the STEPS program. They're able to spend more time in the resource room and in the mainstream setting during that third year. Um, and STEPS supports are available if needed. Um, it's also an opportunity for us to see if the students are successful with less restrictive programming. The downfall is that third graders do not have access to their same age peers at LER. As it is a K-two school. And if students are not successful in a less restrictive setting, a placement at a special purpose private school. May be warranted for the following year. So that's as it is currently. The expansion of the program K-five would allow us to program for students in a less restrictive setting after third grade. Students who are unsuccessful in the program may be sent to a special purpose private school. Because programming is currently limited to K-three right now, it's it's not LRE nor is it in the best interest of students. All students, if we expand, will have access to their same age peers because they would be in a K-five building. It's a district management group recommendation from last year to have um continuous programming. So it really, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have a program that stops at second grade. When we still have students who would benefit from the program. Um, and it would save the the district money because special purpose private schools are costly. So for example, um if we were not going to expand the program um for next year. We currently have four third graders who may need a special purpose private school without the expansion. So what this means is is their needs are more complex and we wouldn't be able to build programs around them. At the at the other schools. Two students who are currently struggling this year, um who were in our STEPS program, uh maybe brought back into the STEPS program. Without it, without the expansion, um there's a high likelihood that next year they they may require. A special purpose private school and this is not the least restrictive environment for them because we know we can program for them um in our district. We could also potentially transition a student back from a special purpose private school. Um, and that would be a savings of around eighty-six thousand. So the the estimated cost per student at a special purpose private school is around a hundred and ten thousand. Now, this does not reflect programming for our most complex students. So when you have really complex students that have a lot of um needs, costs could be over three hundred thousand dollars a year. So with with the average cost of around a hundred and ten thousand um at a special purpose private school. It's it's divided up into parts, so we pay around twenty-three thousand or thirty-eight percent for seed, which is main care. We we pay part of their main care bill. We pay transportation, so if we were to transport um to Lewiston Auburn area, um that's around twenty-four thousand. If a student was attending a special purpose private school within our district, um which is Margaret Murphy at this point, um it would. Transportation costs would obviously be less. And then for the day treatment service alone, it's around sixty-four thousand dollars a year. So if we are to to average and or add that all up, um if we were to expand. We would be saving, you know, an estimate of around eight hundred and forty thousand dollars next year. That would be, you know, four students at around a hundred and ten thousand, one student at potentially three hundred thousand plus. Um, and a student that is currently placed out of district for eighty-six thousand. Our program would be able to support eleven students with one teacher. Um, and we would certainly have um educational technicians within the program. If we were ever to decide to bring in an additional teacher, um we would be able to double the amount of students who could be supported in the program to twenty-two. Does anybody have any questions?
One more comment. In order to make this happen. To make space to happen, we are looking to use some federal dollars to add a modular unit. Over at the Helen Thompson School to reduce class sizes. We have some higher class sizes. So we are targeting um the um the federal dollars. To help us purchase that space. And so by having that space, it will give us a little more freedom to shift over this program to the Helen Thompson School. Should we not be allowed to access the federal dollars if they're not, if we're not approved? To use that money for the modular units? Then I think it's really important for you to understand and know. That we would have to take the existing pre-K program that is housed at Helen Thompson. And we would have to move it over to LER. Um, and there's just no alternative to that. That is the only space that we have available. The move of the STEPS program to Helen Thompson creates additional space available at LER. Um, so LER has plenty of space to absorb that pre-K program. So um one absolutely hinges on the other in in this particular regard. Um, I am presently waiting to hear back. From the Department of Education as to whether our application to use some federal dollars to purchase. The modular units um has been approved or not, so um I hope to hear some something soon. I think Tony has his hand.
Cool, thanks. And yeah, Pat, you got uh right to the heart of one of them. I know there's been a space uh issue there and I um it sounds like a good plan. I guess I have a um full supportive of making this move. It sounds like a really kind of a necessary move in a lot of ways. So it meets a need and I I appreciate the attention to the students of the district. I just wanted to clarify, um I guess what it it'll be a, I mean, a cost savings. As well as an academic benefit to those that greater range of students, there'll be a cost savings there or we'll have like sort of reduced exposure to. Some of those higher costs.
Yes, so if we don't expand the program. We are going to have to send students out of district next year, knowing that we could program for them in district. So that's not in their best interest and it's not least restrictive for those students. So there would be a savings in that because we wouldn't be sending them out. And then the additional savings would be looking to transition a student back um into the program as well.
So kind of a win-win, I guess, is a phrase we might use here.
I think so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim?
Yeah, did I understand correctly that if we bring back the the students that we currently have placed. At remote facilities and are able to maintain the students, we believe we have possibility of of having to place out. About eight hundred thousand dollars is that? You mentioned that number and I wasn't quite sure how that fit in.
Yes, so um the average cost for a special purpose private school is around a hundred and ten thousand. Now, that doesn't um reflect it if we have students that have more complex needs and they need more services. That hundred and ten thousand is just an average. It really, it doesn't reflect students that have more needs and will need more um than what typically would be provided. So next year, we we have students that we will not be able to program for unless we expand. And so absolutely, we would be saving um around eight hundred and forty thousand dollars next year. If we expand the program.
Okay, and that would be an annual savings of, could be up or down, but it's going to be on on an annual issue that we're going to save. Or we're gonna have to spend that money if we don't do this. Am I correct in that understanding?
Yes, you you are correct. Now, we we could certainly expand. And of course, you know, we may have a student that at any time, we, you know, may determine that we have to send to a special purpose private school. Because we were just unable to program for them successfully, um so we would still have a cost. But for for the most part, the students that I'm I'm thinking of and I'm referring to, we we could certainly program for them. They've been successful in our program so far.
It seems like a no-brainer to me, uh save money and do a better job for our students. So yeah, I'm all in favor. It sound, I listened to it be to be explained to me at the finance committee and committee. And I was in favor of it, in favor of it then, and I am now, so I think we ought to do this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good presentation.
Tony?
Yeah, um, and just a quick follow-up. If the feds don't come through for the or approve the money for the modular. How many students are gonna be impacted by the HT pre-K?
Some number of students that we can accommodate at Helen Thompson and pre-K is thirty-two. So those thirty-two students would have to be shifted over to LER.
Okay, and what's what are the odds, if we have odds on if the that the feds will say? I guess, what are the odds they'll say no to the?
So at this point, Tony, um the request is again to help reduce class sizes. And the federal money that has been provided to school districts is to help combat um learning loss. And one way of doing that is to help lower some of the higher class sizes. We're looking at class sizes of around twenty-three, twenty-four next year in grade five. So having some additional classrooms available over at the Helen Thompson School would allow us to hire. Using federal money, um additional staff so that we could indeed reduce the staff and the full class size a little bit more manageable. As you know, spacing has been an ongoing issue at Helen Thompson for a number of years. So um I'm I'm hopeful, but I just don't know the criteria that's being used for the ESAR grant to to know. I I just wouldn't dare guess on how likely is it that they'll approve it or not. It's been about a week since I submitted that application and so I hope to hear something back fairly soon.
Cool, thank you.
Do need a motion on this, Becky.
Yes, I was just waiting to see if anybody else had any other question. So I'm wondering if I have a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we. I expand the, I'm sorry, go ahead. Did you have a question, Tony?
Jim, your honor.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we expand the STEPS program. At whatever facility or how we best can do it, but do it and have it ready for next year.
And a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Teresa. Any questions or comments further? Pat, would you call the roll? Yay.
Yay. Yay.
Yay.
Yay. I can't, I'm sorry, can't hear Pat, so I just said yay.
Me too.
Thank you. You call majority.
There seems to be some major issues tonight with Google meets, so.
There's hearing issues tonight. They're really significant.
Yeah, so if you did call my name, my vote is yay, so.
Patrick, I'll call you now. So, um, I've heard a yay from you. Alyssa?
Yay.
Colin?
Yay.
Oh, uh, yay, sorry, dropped a little bit. Yay.
Yay.
Bold ignorance yet. Yay. Great. Thank you all. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. May I apologize for the, the difficulty with our technology tonight. It's, uh, pretty hard to hear. Um, next on the agenda is a proposal for a ski team at the Gardner High School, Gardner area high school for the twenty-one, twenty-two season.
To help answer some questions, but let me give you just a little bit of background. So many of you who've been on the board will recall that back in nineteen, two thousand, that particular school year, we did a lot of work on our policies around athletics. And at that time, um, the board approved the creation of a unfunded cooperative ski team with RSU thirty-eight. At that time, we probably had, I think, three, maybe four students who were participating in skiing and they were joining RSU thirty-eight to be able to do so. So this year, um, our participation has increased to twelve students. And RSU twelve feels like it is no longer, I'm sorry, RSU thirty-eight, Miranda Cook, they believe it's no longer appropriate, um, for us to continue belonging to their, uh, their team. Rightfully so, given the number of students that, that we have. And so there is interest in moving forward with a club, um, for a couple of years, um, here within our district. Now, your policy says that we're not going to add any new clubs or teams for five years from the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. However, we're here tonight to present this to you because they were already an unfunded cooperative team and it's through no fault of their own. They've grown so much that they're no longer able to participate with RSU thirty-eight. So Nate, what would you like to share?
So, uh, just so you know, the MPA already recognizes us as a varsity team. So, which means we can compete, uh, first state championship. We have been, as Pat said, operating under an individual co-op with Miranda Cook for the past however many years. And our, our team numbers have grown, uh, to the point where we're almost larger than Miranda Cook. So they think that it's probably the best. And I, and I see our numbers continuing to grow and I have to thank Sally Marcos for everything that she has done, um, getting the interest, um, in skiing because she created a, a group, uh, a younger group that is now at the high school level and they have younger kids that they have a ski club and they go to Lost Valley once or twice a week, uh, and she's gotten a lot of interest in skiing. So we're going to see those numbers, I think, continue to grow over the next few years.
So the proposal for tonight then, Nate, is for the MSAD eleven school board to recognize this group as a club. That is kind of the mass, the, the, the back past practice, I would say, that when we have a group of students that want to begin a new organization or a new team, um, it is proposed as a club. It's two years unfunded, um, but it gives them the ability to be, to be tied to our name so that they would be Gardner area high school, um, ski club. But they would have to do, um, all the fundraising necessary to pay for the particular program. Then they could come forward in two years. If they've demonstrated success, they would be able to come back to the board and request that they be our regular team in which they would be funding available. Now Nate has put together some numbers, um, that show that the cost would be, what was that Nate? Roughly?
Roughly around sixteen thousand dollars. That, and that's a rough estimate, but roughly about sixteen thousand dollars a year.
Number, however, is transportation. And I support recommending for the board to approve the ski team or these young, um, students to, uh, create a ski club. But I have to say that with a caveat that I can't support now and unless something else changes in two years, that the district be responsible for providing transportation. As we've discussed, our transportation department is max. And we do not have the capability of adding another team, another club that is going to require transportation from our transportation department. So that would be the only caveat that I would put out there is that, um, maybe there is no transportation provided for any new club or team until there's a club or team that is removed from the list.
Can I, can I ask a question, Pat? Um, regarding club, I, I know that it's a, it's a local decision. It's not an MPA policy that there be a club for two years, uh, clubs that, years. Whereas we have already had an individual co-op and the MPA already recognizes us as a varsity team. I'm assuming you're, the club status would be essentially the fact that it wouldn't receive funding. Uh, outside of that, they would be still considered a varsity team.
Okay. It could be viewed that way. Um, there is no funding. Um, we have not built the budget. Uh, we need to see if they are sustainable over the next two years on their own without being connected to RSU thirty-eight, so.
Yep. Okay, good.
Colin?
I, I'm sorry if you said this already. What's the current participation number? How many students?
We had twelve this year.
Thank you.
Six boys, six girls.
I make a motion that we recognize them as a, uh, senior team, club with no, uh, financial responsibility from the school district.
Second?
Second by Tony. Questions? Thoughts? Pat, would you call?
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Colin. Yeah.
Just because I'm not quite sure how these, these play out in the future. It, it would be nice to be able to give the club a chance to reapply for funding at a period in the future. So would this preclude ever funding them? Or is it acceptable for them to come back in a, in a subsequent year and request funding?
They're allowed to return, demonstrate that they're sustainable. And at that time, if the board officially approves them, then funding would come without approval. My recommend at that time that you can provide the funding, but it needs to exclude transportation because our transportation department just doesn't have the capacity to add another team.
Thank you.
If there are no more questions, Pat, would you please call the roll? Yay.
Veronica Babcock?
Yay.
Nancy Corbin Brown?
Yay.
Yay. Yay.
Yay, I think. You call me?
Your call?
Pat, you're welcome. Yeah, okay.
Yay.
Yay.
Okay, I have Tony. Colin, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can now. Yay.
Yeah.
Yay.
Great. That is unanimous, Becky.
Great, thank you. Boy, this is becoming a challenge.
Pat, I think, I think one of the problems of us hearing is somebody doesn't have their microphone shut off. Because you, you keep going like blank that I can't even hear you.
All right. Can you hear me now? Okay, is it, is it my mic?
Yes, I can hear you fine. Thank you.
All right, so the next one that we have, um, has to do with tennis. Um, and you have a policy, again, kind of back to the policy work that we did in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. And you have a policy that stipulates the minimum number of students that have to participate on all of our teams in order for those teams to be able to continue participating. We have a team this year, uh, tennis, boys tennis, where the minimum number of participation is seven. And we currently only have three students who are participating. So I need to bring that to your attention, um, that we only have three. My recommendation is especially given the years that we're having, I think we should allow the boys to continue to play. Their season has begun. I think it's really important that we make this available. And I think that we should charge Nate to keep an eye on the numbers, bring this back to the board for, for next year if the numbers don't increase. Um, and really charge the coach to try to rebuild this program and to increase the numbers. So that would be my recommendation.
Would you like a motion, Pat? I'll make them.
Teresa has her hand up.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to know what the cost is for three, for three, um, members, team members.
Um, my, two, I don't know. Nate, do you have that?
Uh, the, the expenses for tennis are relatively minimal. There are no officials. Uh, it's transportation and a coach and equipment. So those are essentially the three expenses. So it's probably to have that team is, oh, and, and the transportation this year is hopefully going to be, uh, just the, the van because it's only three tennis players. So the coach will hopefully be transporting. He's got to be cleared. Uh, but hopefully he'll be transporting the athletes on the school van. Uh, so that will drastically reduce the amount of transportation costs involved too. So, uh, it'll just be essentially whatever transportation for the van and, you know, the coach's salary.
Great, thanks Nate.
And tennis balls, right?
Yeah, which were, yeah, which are part of our, our regular, uh, budget line for supplies and equipment.
Great. Colin, your hand was up? No, okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got my hand up.
Yes, okay, Jim. Sorry.
Do the boys and girls teams go to the same tennis meets?
No, they're opposite locations on the same day.
Okay.
Typically, depending upon, depending upon the, the schedule, so there are some schools that don't have teams. So let's say, for example, we were to play, uh, we're scheduled to play Meselonski, but Meselonski only has a boys team. Our boys team may go to Meselonski and we may be hosting somebody else for girls. But typically it's, uh, same day, opposite site.
Is there any potential for the future with cooperative teams joining forces with one of the other local folks as we do with swimming?
Potentially, yes. Uh, you know, I, I, I agree with Pat. I think this is an, just an off year with COVID. And, you know, our numbers two years ago, of course, spring sports were, uh, were canceled last year. But the year before that, we had strong numbers in boys tennis. So I, I'm hoping this is an off year and that we won't have to even go down that road.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Historically, there was, um, one year, uh, where we had particularly low numbers. It was long, long ago, long ago. And it came back. And tennis is really, um, it's a life sport. It's something you can always do. So it, um, I have every confidence it will come back and that we can grow that program.
Um, back to Alyssa's question, uh, we do not require a board vote on this particular matter. Um, the policy requires that I bring it to your attention. It doesn't require a vote at this time. Okay?
Great, thank you. Uh, we have seven minutes before we need to take a vote to move, um, nope, that's not true. Mike, Mike, we have thirteen minutes until we need to vote. The clock on my computer is a little bit fast. Do we think that we can finish in thirteen minutes?
So.
Is the desire among us to finish in thirteen minutes? Okay, let's go. I see thumbs up everywhere. Okay, moving along. Location of board meetings. Uh, yesterday, Terry, Pat and I met with a company called Pro AV Systems. A gentleman came to the, to the boardroom and then we met remotely with, um, an engineer in an attempt to try and, um, come to a, a workable solution so that we can come back and meet in person. Um, we're considering, um, some new board furniture, boardroom furniture that perhaps takes up less space so that we can configure, configure the room better. And, um, also to, um, install, uh, cameras, um, and microphones into the room with the use of a, um, a desktop computer so that we can, um, continue to stream alive our meetings. It won't look like this potentially any longer. We won't have the little boxes. But we could be in the room together if we can make this work. So I just wanted to give you that update. We don't have a cost yet. We don't have, um, we have, we, we just met with them, um, and they're working up a price for us so that, um, we can figure out if we can do that so that we can begin to meet together again. None of us wants to, um, forego how, how great this has been just as far as public participation. I go in every, every week and look at how many people look at our meetings. And so I, I think it's incredibly valuable to continue to have the community support and, uh, visibility and, um, exposure for the community to see us and to watch our meetings. So I don't want to give that up. So we're, but, but, but we are working on trying to, um, solve this so that we can have the best of all worlds. Matt, you have something? Muted?
We can't hear you.
Sorry, is this something that we can pay for, for, uh, with federal, like COVID money?
Possibly. We're looking at some CRF, um, grant money, um, to see whether it would meet those guidelines since it has to do with social distancing and communicating with the public. But I don't know for certain whether, uh, we can meet the criteria or not, but we're exploring it.
What would be not? What a previous, um, previous that we have some left. Um, any other questions? Okay. Moving along. Superintendent's report? Snow days? Can't hear you. Are you muted?
Sorry, I completely lost volume for a moment. I, I couldn't hear anything that was being said by any of you, so I think I'm back online. So snow days. Well, this year we had one snow day and one remote day. Um, and I've been speaking with my colleagues.
Um, and I've been speaking with my colleagues in, in the area and, um, have conferred with the Department of Education. And given the waivers that have been offered and provided by the Department of Education, I am recommending actually that we do not make up that snow day for, for students. Currently, our last, our last school day is June 11th, which is a Friday. If we make up the snow day, it would require that we bring students in for one day on a Monday, which I don't think most of them will attend. Um, and so rather, I'd like to keep the last day for students on Friday, June 11th. But that will still mean that staff will need to come in on Monday and Tuesday. So it'd be a great opportunity for us to kind of finish up the year, do some additional professional development to, to wrap up the year. So I would like to make that proposal, um, with the board, if everyone's comfortable with that approach. I think it makes sense, yeah, everyone's okay with that?
Thumbs up if you're good.
Okay, great. Yeah, I, I see Gwen, Gwen looks excited, yeah.
I may be wrong, I think it's pro pools to say July, Pat, but let me run with that for a few more minutes at home.
Yeah, I think students will be, students will be happy. It just, it doesn't make sense for them to come back one day, you know, it, it doesn't because it would just be saying their goodbyes. Um, I very briefly update on transportation department, uh, on the, um, yeah, transportation department. So as I already mentioned earlier, um, we, at the last meeting that we were to, when we were together, I had indicated that we were down six drivers. Well, we have now hired a new driver. We have one driver who was on family medical leave who has returned. I notified you a little while ago that we have another driver who was out, who's going to be returning on April 26th. However, we had a different driver go out on family medical leave, and we've had a driver, um, retire. So, um, we're a little bit ahead, um, than where we were a month ago, but it remains very fluid. But we are up a, a driver or two right now, so, so we're feeling a little less pressure, although the demand on our team is still pretty significant. Also wanted to bring to your attention, um, you have a policy on disposition of school property. And there is a grand piano, um, that the high school, uh, would like to dispose of. And, um, the high school has reached out to all of our community, to their, to the town offices to see whether anyone, um, any of those communities are interested, and they are not. So we have a gentleman from Minnesota who repairs, um, these old pianos and who would like to have it. Um, and he will take care of transportation to get it from Gardner to somewhere in Minnesota. But I need to bring that to your attention. Is anyone opposed to us, um, disposing of that old piano? Great, thank you. And then I, I have one last thing to add. And that is, I just want to make sure that you are aware as spring arrives and we're beginning to think about the end of the school year and wrapping up this very difficult school year, we are also in the position where we need to begin planning for next school year. And I want to make sure that board members know that, and the community, members who are listening from, from the community, that we're being told that we should plan and anticipate in having to create, um, schedules next year and plans that continue to include students wearing masks and students being physically distanced. So we'll still most likely have, um, students who are three feet apart. Uh, we don't yet know about the six foot distancing for, um, snacks, for lunch, et cetera. But hopefully you heard tonight all of the challenges that go into the planning behind the scenes to determine how many students we can have back in the building, uh, for, for next year. And, I mean, for now. So if we still have to follow those, that, those safety guidelines for next year, we don't yet know what that means. We want students back in five days a week. But there are lots of complications with that, and we'll have to see. Some of those complications have to do with contractual responsibilities. We have staff members who are, um, contractually required to have a certain amount of time off for prep time and, and coverage for students. And as we make modifications, um, we are taking away from some of their time. And so we just have to be prepared to work with our associations to really figure out how many students we can bring back and whether we can indeed return, um, for five days a week or, or not. So I just want to make sure that that's on your radar. We're going to need to be pulling people together, staff members, administrators, to really help us figure this out. Someone had their hand raised, Jim, I think it was?
Yeah, I did have my hand raised, and you answered my question.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Um, and then the final thing, there are three minutes left. The final thing is with John Lepereir's resignation, we have begun advertising for middle school principal. The deadline for applications will be Wednesday, April 21st. I will be working with Becky, um, to help determine the membership of that committee. I've asked Becky to have a couple of board members participate. It will be Angela and myself. And, um, I've notified the staff that we would like to have six slots, um, open for staff members to participate as well. So, uh, we'll keep you posted on that process. I see that Teresa has a question?
Yes, I was just wondering if I could possibly take a look at that piano before it leaves?
Um, I, I guess, sure, um. Chad, are you still here? Mr. Kempton?
Yes, I am.
Did you hear the request from Teresa?
Yes, and I, I will have to check with David because I believe he's made arrangements with the person in Minnesota, but I can check with him tomorrow.
Okay, if you would do that, and then we can let Teresa know.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it is 8:29, and that is my report.
Well, I think we have 30 seconds worth of something we could continue to.
Happy Easter.
Pat, help you out?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, you may have already done this earlier, but did you, um, read Cassandra's comment about the expansion of the steps program?
Yes, I did, at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, perfect, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Well, Gwen, Gwen has her hand raised.
I'm sorry, um, I just wanted to let everyone know that the Interact Club had their induction ceremony and added 22 members to their, um, club. Had an audio, audience viewing of 300 people. And the NHS and Interact Club worked together to put 15 Easter dinner baskets and candy baskets together for families in our district. And that's all I got.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Wow, okay, well, it's 8:30, 32, so. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for your hard work.